Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of December 12. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for coming here. I know the weather is not ideal. For folks at home, Steve, we have on the screen the agenda items for tonight. Okay, very good. Very much, Steve. We begin each first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. You have in your packets. For the folks at home. And we'll show you the beginning and ending balances. We have an opening balance of $4,586,548.97. Receipts for the month, and this is the month of November I'm referring to. That leaves us with an ending balance, as you see at the bottom right-hand box. You have also your statements. A couple of things that I would point out to you that we received as part of this supervisor's report. Some additional interest on a pilot. We received our final quarter of sales tax. And a transfer tax, Harry likes to keep track of that in November. It was $21,540 we received. It was actually for the month of October. We just received again today. The figure for November, that's $33,000, Harry. We are now approaching 10 years of having the community preservation fund.
You mean you're gonna have to update my tattoo again?
I think so. And so, in those 10 years, we'll get you some exact numbers, but nearly $3 million has been leveraged with land trusts and other funds to produce over $10 million worth of preservation here in the community. So we applaud all of you who supported that program. You can drive the roads and see many properties that are permanently protected thanks to this fund and your efforts. So, any questions about the supervisor's report? If not, would anybody like to make a motion? Thank you.
To accept the supervisor's report?
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion if not all in favor?
Aye.
We also have a couple of budget adjustments that our bookkeeper Ann has prepared. And you'll be seeing a bunch of budget adjustments coming in the second meeting as we close the books for the year. We have lots of good news to tell you about because we've been tracking our budgets on almost a daily basis. We close out the sidewalk project, or about to close out the sidewalk project, and as you know, was awarded at a higher value than we had originally expected. $707,000 of which was mostly federally funded. We closed the project, we had to make some change orders to it, but we closed the project with over $50,000 worth of savings from that original award amount. We negotiated a final figure for that. So you'll be seeing that return to our reserve funds. We also have appropriated quite a bit of money towards the tennis court and to the truck that was unexpected. And we'll be closing next week on the portion that we are borrowing for that. And we've got some very favorable rates for that. Okay, any questions about budget adjustments? If not, who would like to make a motion to approve them?
So. Second.
Okay, any question? Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. It's time for the clerk's report. Sue McCann.
Town clerk monthly report, November 1 through November 30. Total local shares remitted to supervisor for town revenue, $1,031.1. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the spade and neuter program, $79. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $22.50. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Racing and Wagering, $15. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $1,422.99. For a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,570.50. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above. And I also have some abstracts that the... Prepared by the bookkeeper. This one goes back to July, so we have a couple of them here for the city group. It's voucher 22179 through 22257. And the total abstract, $193,075.87. And these were processed in the month of July. And we have August. Vouchers 22258 through 22429. For total abstract of $986,079.56. And this was processed in the month of August. September. Vouchers 22430 through 22511. Total abstract, $153,044.15. That is the vouchers that are processed in the month of September. And for October, it's voucher 22512 through 22669. Total abstract, $344,671.24. And these vouchers were processed in October. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Sue. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So.
All right, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, announcements. We only have one announcement is to remind you that the second meeting of the month, this month, will be on the 21st. Not as originally scheduled for the holiday week. Town hall itself will be closed the day after Christmas. Christmas falls on Monday. It'll be closed Tuesday, December 26th, and open again on Wednesday, the 27th. At this point, and any other announcements? No? Okay. Public comment? Do we have public comment this evening, Linda?
Excuse me, no, I have a comment on the solar.
Okay, very good. Any public comments? Other public comments?
Although, since you mentioned it.
Okay.
When are you going to be changing the website so that especially the committees are up to date with their minutes? Some of them have posted, the last time was 2012. You need to get those people moving.
Yeah, I don't know if those committees are meeting on a regular basis. I know we've had some committees, like the Ethics Committee, that haven't had quite some time because they haven't had anything in front of them. But we can take a look at that and make sure it's up to... But if your question goes to the new website, because we will be transitioning to a new website, I think it's in general our expectation that we'll have a new website coming maybe mid-year. There's a lot of information gathering and so on and so forth that we need to do before we transition to that new part. So, I hope I at least attempted to answer your question. Okay, if there are no other public comments, let's open the public hearing. Our now third public hearing on the amendment to zoning the solar energy systems. And Sue McCann, if you'd be kind enough to read the notice, please.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on December 12, 2017, at 7:35 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on the proposed amended local law D proposed of 2017, entitled "A Local Law to Amend the Zoning Law Regarding Solar Energy Systems", to amend the Town of Red Hook zoning law to permit small-sized solar energy systems as accessory or principal uses, and by adding review and approval provisions for the permitting of medium and large solar energy systems as accessory or principal uses. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in... To be heard in person or direct the comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606. That arrangements can be made by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated November 29, 2017. Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good, Sue. Thank you very much. And for the folks at home, just a reminder, this is our third public hearing now on this amendment to our zoning regarding solar energy systems. We had a couple of workshops. One on, or the last one on November 28th. We discussed some of the specifics related to the legislation. We also took public comment at the previous meeting and took that into account. And we discussed amongst ourselves, and if you've been following this at home, you've seen that we have quite a variety of opinions about what the law should look like. But we did at least get to the point where we had some compromise and we had the majority opinion to amend the law and put it forward again to both our planning boards and the county planning board. And they both responded favorably to those changes. And we are here again this evening to hear your input. Thank you. Linda, would you like to open up the public hearing?
Okay. My concern has always been about trees, whether it's removal of trees or planting of trees. And the encouragement to allow some farmlands to go back to forest. That provides wildlife, the habitat that it needs. Okay, I went through this sort of with a fine-tooth comb. Page two, in the middle, it says, "An next here too as attachment A." That was not included with this draft. Page...
I'm sorry, it was included with the draft that was on file in the clerk's office. I don't know which probably you're looking at.
I took this off the website.
Okay, well, it's on file with the clerk, so it was...
Well, it wasn't with this document.
The catchphrase is with the Town Clerk's office for this one.
Well, if it's officially on the website, it should be attached.
What is the catchphrase?
The E is stable. Harry, the E is stable.
Yes.
The next page.
Yeah.
Three. Four, the provision for access to sunlight for solar energy systems so far as conditions permit. Again, I'm concerned about the cutting of trees, be it on the person's property that's applying for the permit or its neighbors. Because in many cases, trees will give nice shade to the neighbors. So I feel that the neighbors should be involved in the permit process to let them have their opinion.
Yeah.
Part B mentions the building permit. Does it say if there's a cost to that?
Okay.
C1. I kind of felt that in the hamlet, it should be based on acreage because some parcels in the hamlet may be big enough to put in a large array of either on the roof or a garage roof or standing.
Just for clarification.
Okay.
Because it sounds like you're gonna raise a couple of points.
Right.
In the Hamlet District, solar energy systems are permitted on the roof. If you look at the language there in C1, it's that they're not permitted as ground-mounted in the hamlet.
What I'm saying, they may have enough acreage for ground-mounted.
Okay.
I don't want this language to hold back people from doing what I consider the right thing. They're trying to access free energy to offset using fossil fuels. Okay. When you refer to the small solar systems, you mentioned 25 kilowatt. But when you get to the medium, you mention, again, 25 kilowatts to 200. It should maybe be 26. Okay? Okay, page five, where it mentions under C3, is not located within the front yard of the lot. Well, you could have a piece of property that has... Where the best location might be the front yard. So again, I don't want the verbiage to hold back anybody. Page six at the top, seven. You mentioned verification, but who's doing the verification? Is it the person's word or the manufacturer's specifications?
Which section are you...
And I read the top. V11, IOT, seven?
Yes, verification shall be provided to the code enforcement office.
How is that done? Is it the person's word?
Manufacturer's specification will indicate.
Well, that should be indicated there.
It says verification.
This mentions 60% coverage on the medium, but doesn't say the percentage on the small. Is there a percentage for the small coverage? Page seven, 3A. It references 14337D3A2. I couldn't find that. I couldn't find number two. There is not number two.
1453?
In 3A.
3A.
Okay.
Okay, again, the total height you mentioned is 12 feet in height. Again, the ground configuration could make that higher or lower than what you might want. What I can think of is, down in Hyde Park, when they put in the Monroe Building, the town has a certain height restriction, but because it was on a hill, it went way up. Well, that building should have been half of what it should have been, what was built. It looks terrible. So I don't want to see that happen with these. You really need to take into consideration the ground. Maybe the average, take an average of the heights. G says, "The owner or operator shall identify responsible person for public inquiries throughout the life of the installation." Okay, who's gonna maintain this info?
That would be our building.
And I know this is for new installations, but shouldn't there be fencing that was put around what we have now? There are some properties, I could think of a farm that has sole installation, and I believe there's fencing around that.
If it's not required by law, it would be something we could not ask. But New York State Ag and Markets has regulations that insist that we not unduly burden farmers in this and other endeavors.
Okay, on page eight, J, that the middle, it says, "To return the parcel to its original state." And I would submit that you should plant trees. I want to encourage you, plant trees. Page nine, E1A. "Solar energy systems shall not be installed within a designated wetland as defined by those particular departments." And specifically, the DEC is supposed to reevaluate wetlands every 10 years. They don't do it, but it should be done. So, these wetland designations may not be up to date.
You can all go with the information.
I know, I just want to let you know. E, G. What mentions the conduits being buried. I would like there to be some archaeological oversight. And number 10, F, inspection, safety, and removal. "The Town of Red Hook reserves the right to inspect the solar system for building or fire code compliance." But it doesn't give a time. So I would say at least during the first three years and yearly after that. But is the...
It says that we have the right to inspect the system. So there's no constraints upon that right to inspect it.
Okay, but without there being a specific time, as I know, it doesn't get that.
We have the flexibility to do it at any time, should we feel that that's necessary. Yeah, that's for safety.
3B. "Disturbed earth shall be graded and reseeded." I would say replanted. Reseeding just as putting grass down. I would like to see plants, trees.
Right, again, it's to return it to its existing state. So if it was a field, we would not insist upon trees to be planted there. But I understand that, that's your wish, so I don't want to take that away from you. But that's what the language says, yeah.
Where I'm at, okay. Page 11, six. I thought those percentages were kind of high. 6% interest for annum, and then 5%?
6% interest? For a year? 6% interest doesn't seem to apply to me as a remedy penalty. I mean, you see penalty schedules much higher than that for many other enforcement proceedings, but your opinion is...
Okay. Okay, G signage, number one. It mentions 36 square inches, but doesn't say what type of sign is acceptable. Would this be a metal sign? Or, you know, if somebody puts up a paper sign that gets wet, there it goes. And you had the definitions, I think usually they go in the front of the document. And you see definitions. That's about it.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to go through the draft. Many of the things you raised, not all of them, but many of the things you raised, we did discuss in the workshop. And whether it's the height limitation or other specifics, we came to some sort of compromise on that. We initially had much higher. We started, I think, at some point many months ago at 20. Worked our way to 14 after the first draft, I think that was right before public hearing. And then, again, trying to work with varying opinions here on the Town Board, one of the compromises was a height limitation of 12. As far as the hamlet, again, that was something we discussed, that there were districts which we felt were more sensitive, are historic districts than others. And so when we talk about things like community solar, having options for those homeowners in those historic areas so that they can participate, as you said, we don't want to make it so they can't participate, but maybe in a way that accomplishes two goals, which is that they can be a part of clean energy and we can also, you know, perhaps lessen any negative impacts that have...
Since you have restrictions on the hamlet, is there... And I've asked this before, is there any way that community funds that you are getting a nice resource there? If that could be used for those people so that they can do appropriate upgrades to their properties? Because you are restricting them. You're restricting them on the type of windows they can put in. You know, the roof or whatever. And I think that with a restriction, there should be something that's positive.
Yeah.
Something that they could get to make it so that they're keeping that property in good shape.
The historic property, the historic district. Well, if I could attempt to try and answer your question. One is just remember that that legislation says if you are replacing something in time, it's fine. If you are taking vinyl siding and replacing it with vinyl siding, for example, we don't ask you to, you know, return it to some sort of historic period. The second thing is when it comes to community solar, again, when we look at, hopefully we'll be doing a community solar project like Ryan Beck is and Claremont is, to allow alternatives for these folks, we'll look at prioritization. And we'll look at our most sensitive areas in the town and see if we want to prioritize. We'll open it up to the whole township, prioritize. If we can't fit everybody in, and we might be able to, everybody who's interested, prioritize those who are in those more sensitive districts. So it's a two-pronged approach, which is we want to have intelligent zoning to guide it. And we also want to have programs to offer alternatives. It's not unlike what we did with our farm and preservation. We want to make sure that we have some carrots available. Any other comments folks want to make at the public hearing? Very good, hearing none. And thank you again, Linda. I would entertain a motion to close. Very good, hearing none. And thank you again, Linda. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at eight o'clock.
Sue move.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Bye.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we can segue right into this agenda item. And the first order of business we should tackle is our secret work, our LWRP. Again, as a reminder, both our planning board and the county planning board were sent these documents for review, and they gave their responses. The LWRP, you can see from the planning board. Any questions about that? And county's planning, I spoke to Brad Barclay again, and he had only positive things to say about our proposed legislation and the change that was, or changes that were made as a result of the workshop. All right, Ted Fink has prepared for us a ever so slightly revised Part Two and Part Three from what you saw for the last several weeks. It reflects that change, the two primary changes for the folks at home. To the draft, that was initially the subject of a public hearing, was to allow in the historic landmark overlay district accessory systems, ground-mounted systems, only by special permit and site plan review. And if you look at, and Linda, some of the things you mentioned, if you look at what our special permit review requirements are, it's rather extensive in that that's also in our code, and address some of those things that you raised, and thank you for raising them. So we have a Part Two here. I hope you've had a chance to review it. I know you have essentially the same draft. It's been slightly changed based upon the changes that were a result of the 28th and 29th meetings. Are there any questions about Part Two? Okay, if not, we also have Part Three, the evaluation of the magnitude and importance of the project impacts. And you see the draft that's prepared for you and the language that has been slightly amended to reflect those changes that were made. Are there any questions about Part Three? There's the coastal assessment form, and we have our own local waterfront revitalization, And we have a resolution that's been prepared for us. It's determining local law D proposed of 2017 to be consistent with the policy standards and conditions of the Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program.
Mr. Supervisor, before you do that, would you like to address the cross-reference that was raised in the public hearing, just to correct that as a matter of ministerial?
The 143, yeah.
Yeah. So I wonder if, this is at page seven in section 3A.
Yes, I understand.
It says lot coverage shall not exceed 10 acres of land for partial is measured in. And I'm assuming that reference should be to the medium solar energy system description, which says total lot coverage will not exceed 60% as of the mediums. Lot coverage shall be calculated for medium as the area measured from the outer edges of the solar panels at maximum horizontal tilt and shall include all other solar photovoltaic related equipment. So I assume that is what is meant to be referenced by lot coverage.
Okay.
And Danny's sitting here, I assume you can confirm that. So that would be D2G.
D2G.
And I'm assuming that that's what's meant, just ministerially, it's a cross-reference, so.
Do we have to say something though?
We'll make that change then here.
Just a cross-reference. Say something in what?
How do you want to word that?
Word what?
To see, to cross-reference it.
Just right.
Just crossing out the 3A2 and putting in 2G.
Right, right here.
Is what I'm saying.
That's where it was referenced.
That's what it appears to be. Just looks like section two.
It was A2, A2.
That cross-reference didn't get there.
It's referencing.
Right, it's just, I think it's.
You could use to have the two sections as in solar and we change.
Yeah, and I think they got switched around, so I think it's just a parent cross-reference.
Thank you, good catch, good catch, Linda, good catch, Chris.
So we'll fix that. All right, and with that.
Okay, and with that in mind, a resolution of consistency with LWRP, whereas the town board of town of Red Hook is considering adoption, and whereas the local law was originally submitted to the town board, whereas on May 2nd, 1995, the Town of Red Hook adopted a local waterfront revitalization program, and whereas it requires a lead agency to make a determination of consistency, and we have done so here this evening with a vote upon this, and I so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
And would that be, have a resolution? Or it is a resolution, so.
Yeah.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Thank you. Thank you very much, okay. All right, very good. At this point, we are.
Is that all in favor?
I think that was all in favor. Are there any?
All in favor, anybody?
Yes, both on this end.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we have, a NECDAC was included in Part Three. You know, the secret forms have changed a little bit. The NECDAC is included, so when we review Part Three, it's included in NECDAC. And at this point, I would like to thank all of you, public and town board members, for working so hard on trying to forge a compromise. I know it's not the law we always individually like, but I think it's something that hopefully we can live with for a while and will always come back to it if need be. So we have resolution number 85, and that's approving local law D, an act to amend the zoning for solar energy systems.
Can you just hold on one second?
Yeah.
I'm looking for.
I believe we have it proposed as local.
Right, but before that, we have to consider the NECDAC. You can't consider the local law resolution itself before you do the NECDAC.
Well, we consider it as part of the.
I know, but we haven't taken an action on that. We've just reviewed it.
Okay.
So we need to take that.
It's part of a formal, though.
Yes, for sure. Just one moment. I thought you had a resolution for that.
Separate resolution.
Just one second. Well, you should at least take a separate action.
Yeah.
Whether we have a resolution. And we have a written NECDAC for it. I thought we had, could we not have a separate resolution?
I don't see that.
No, it's included, informed me that it's now included in.
Well, the NECDAC is in the Part Three for sure.
Yeah, in the Part Three.
That's correct, but I thought we had a little resolution, you know, accepting that Part Three, but if not, we should certainly have a motion and a separate action.
We can do it. Our motion that we classify a NECDAC for local law D proposed of 2017, if there are second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And then lastly, we are at the point of approving local law D, a resolution. Number, would this be 86 then, Sue?
That was just a motion.
Just a motion.
Yep.
Okay, resolution number 85 dated December 12th, 2017, authorizing the adoption of the town board, local law D proposed of 2017. It would be local law number 5, 2017.
And you have a blank in that one, which we are waiting for the county's response letter, which I think is now December 11th. I think that's December 11th. It's on the second page where you have a blank. We just have a record for when that came back.
Okay, thank you very much.
And fill that in.
Good catch. And I won't read the whole resolution, but we're aware of all the meetings and workshops stuff for how, and I so moved, resolution number 85. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much.
Which one is that?
So this is the resolution.
Eighty-five, this is to approve the local law, D.
Authorizing adoption of the local law.
Of the local law.
Of the local law, D?
Yes.
Yes, and I so moved and Bill seconded the resolution.
I would not approve local law D.
Okay, thank you very much, Harry.
I have strong reasons that I can express.
Okay, please go right ahead.
The local law D says, in my vernacular, that medium solar will be allowed everywhere in the town. Medium solar is a commercial operation, and you're putting commercial facilities in what are residential areas. And as such, I think it flies in the face of the quality of life in residential areas. It flies in the face of safety in residential areas, and there is no reason in the world that it should be in residential areas. And if I'm looking at this correctly, it says the medium solar is allowed everywhere.
Okay, thank you, Harry. And just for clarification, yes, medium solar is allowed. It's only allowed in certain districts ground-mounted. So there's going to be rare occasions, I think we've talked about this in previous meetings, there could be a school building, for example, that could hold on the roof a medium accessory installation. So yes, that is possible. Conceivably, there could be a residence that could have a system slightly above the small size that would kick it into the classification, as Linda pointed out, of 25 and a half, 200 watts or something. That could be roof-mounted. For only a few districts where it's allowed ground-mounted, and within the entire HLO area, it must be through a very stringent special permit process.
You can have a 200 kilowatt system, correct, a rather large system, and it says permitted here everywhere.
That's correct, Harry. And again, if you look at the language of the law, I could draw you to that attention. Where it is, we've gone over this in several meetings now.
I voted in for it.
That you're against. We understand that, Harry, and I hope that you feel that we've all compromised in your direction to be sensitive to those issues, but we did sort of strike a compromise, and, you know, if we need to take a look at it, we get lots of advance warning before anything besides.
We're not going to compromise with safety when you deal with families and neighborhoods and whatever. And allowing things like this, given without any control is just unreasonable.
Okay, well, there's lots of.
Distracting the quality of life here.
There's lots of controls in this local law, and we've been told it's one of the most stringent local laws developed for solar in any community. So we respectfully disagree on this one, Harry. Any other comments before we continue our vote?
I have just similar comments to Harry. I'm, you know, in favor of this, and we've discussed it on our workshop draft, but as far as the medium system goes, as Harry says, that, you know, that's a really borderline industrial use, and it is sort of a blanket permitted. And, you know, my drawl is would be that it was a little more stringent in a residential area, as we had discussed at, you know, our workshops, for these, for large ground-mounted use system. It could end up in a development or something like that, which is possibly what we would not want it. And that's why I think a special permitted use would be a better way of doing than just a blanket permitted use for the medium-sized systems.
Okay.
Because they are rather large.
Well, they can be. They could also be not so large if they're on the small end of the medium size. But we did compromise on that issue as well, as you know. I offered, you know, would it be advisable to increase the minimum lot size, so that now it needs to be three acres? And so that takes it out of a lot of those residential neighborhoods.
No, it still allows any residential neighborhoods, and I don't see that as a compromise at all. I don't think that kind of safety is something that you can compromise with. I think safety is paramount, and you don't compromise, there's no such thing as a compromise.
Harry, can I just ask you, just out of curiosity, what kind of safety are you talking about with a ground-mounted solar array?
Well, a ground-mounted 200 kilowatt system is a power plant, and it's going to have substantial electrical power there, and it's going to be hooked up to the grid.
So you're worried about like electric.
I'm worried about all sorts of things. Plus, in a residential area, you know, the woods are playgrounds for kids, and somebody puts this in their yard, and it is allowed, it's allowed as a secondary use or primary use.
I have to tell you, Harry, that as a mother of a lot of young children and knowing a lot of young children on here, actually, kids don't run around in the fields anymore. They don't run around in the forest.
I pity them.
No, listen, Harry, I just got to tell you, you know, they don't. And so it would be one thing, and I would love to see our children running around neighborhoods into each other's yards. I mean, I think that would be a great way to live, you know, but it's just not really the way people raise their children right now. And there's a lot of provisions in here for screening, for landscaping, for fencing, so that, sure, there might be some children who could wander into a solar array, but it's not, in the way this law is written, it's so restrictive that, you know, they're not just going to be like right next to a playground, you know, inviting children to wander among the solar arrays like a graveyard or something like that, where it's just sort of like open to the public. I mean, these things are going to be very clearly set apart from where people are generally walking and, you know, doing their recreational activities.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to clarify for the people at home. The legislation requires that the defense of public will not have access to it.
Right.
Nonetheless, it is a commercial operation that will be installed in neighborhoods in, like Lyndon Acres. I know you know Lyndon Acres pretty well, for instance. But any neighborhood, it can go in any neighborhood.
We hardly have any lots that are three acres and above. I mean, I just got to tell you.
I'll show you, I'll show you several.
That are untreed.
I will show you several.
Yeah, there's very few that are actually suitable for solar in those neighborhoods, Harry. They've all been built out. But, you know, if there does come a project and we get many months' advance notice that there's a project that concerns you, I'd be very happy to take a look at it again and see whether or not we've got adequate protections for.
It's the Roman way to do it. You anticipate, and it is a responsibility for leaders to anticipate and to deal with it.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just make a couple comments since the workshop where we reviewed a lot of these things and really discussed them wasn't televised. I just want to make a couple comments. Basically, that a lot of the things you brought up, Linda, were things that also concerned me and that I was hoping to see addressed in the law, that I think that there are some, maybe even many lots in the town where solar could possibly be in a front yard, but would be like totally unseeable by neighbors and not on roadways. I also agree with you that there are some areas in the hamlets, for example, perhaps an acreage restriction would have been appropriate. In general, I think we did come from where we were when we first. In general, I think we did come from where we were when we first brought it to the public. We came closer to where I was hoping to be, which is basically what you're saying. You know, to really not restrict, to our greatest ability, allow people to do solar if they want to do solar, you know, and be encouraging, and at the same time, keep in mind that we have a community character here in Red Hook that we also want to preserve, you know, that we want to keep it looking and feeling rural and, you know, be aware of used sheds and, you know, open space. And we want to protect farmland and all that stuff. So anyway, I think it's not, no zoning is ever perfect. But I'm happy with the place we came to, which I feel at least reflects, as far as we know and as far as the solar industry is right now, you know, what people had expressed they wanted in general. The needs that we knew of at the time. And I feel confident that in the future, if something here ends up being a safety concern or ends up being, you know, allowing something that we just find is just unacceptable or, you know, not allowing something that we think is right, you know, that we can come back and make another amendment. So anyway, I'm happy with where we went, and I appreciate that we all were able to talk about what we wanted from the law and the concerns we had about it.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion before we continue our vote? I think we had a motion, we had a second. Bill, any further discussion? If not? Okay, so why don't we do a roll call? We have a one, we have a two. Sarah?
Okay, yeah, I'm an I, I'm an I.
An I, Jim? We have three I's?
No, I still have reservations.
Okay, we have.
With that, I think it's special permitted, right?
Three I's, and I think we have two naves. Okay. Very good. The motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. We're going to move on to item number two on the agenda. It is a secret resolution, and it relates to the Rec Park East playground equipment. We've been looking into replacing our very old recreational playground equipment. It's been something that folks in our community have been asking us to take a look at. And we're happy that we have a subcommittee working on it. And we hope very soon to be able to replace that equipment with newer, more exciting stuff, but also stuff that's available to all the members of our community, regardless of their ability. And so we have, in item number two, a resolution, this would be eighty-seven?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, thank you. It's a resolution adopting a secret determination, and we're doing secret just sort of cautiously. We're replacing playground equipment, which is a relatively minor action. And this resolution determines it to be a type-two action, and it will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And so therefore, we won't draft an environmental impact statement because it's just the equipment we're looking at swapping out. That's resolution number eighty-six, dated December twelfth. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Thank you very much. We have another secret resolution. This relates to the Rec Park Annex Project. As you know, folks, we are very fortunate that we are assembling funds, grants and otherwise, to finally, after a decade, start to work on the Rec Park West. We'll call it informally, just so you don't get confused, on the west side of Lyndon Avenue. And we are going to start with the infrastructure. We're going to put in water, electric, parking, bathrooms, and a challenger field, a field designed to accommodate individuals with additional physical or mental challenges. And so we have a little bit of secret work to do because we are going to tackle doing the bonding for the initial phase one of this project. And I think I've described the project to you pretty much, and it's in this resolution number eighty-seven. Did I get that right? Did I? Okay, good. Adopting a secret determination of nonsignificance regarding Rec Park West improvements, phase one. And just to let you know, we conducted secret when we came up with this master plan or comprehensive plan for that property years ago. What we are doing now is just taking a look at the slight changes that we're making to that plan, which is the addition of some property and also the change in the one field to accommodate those individuals, AKA the challenger field, which we received a $200,000 grant, by the way, for. So, resolution number eighty-seven, an ISO move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor? I, all right. Let's see, we have Rec Park Improvements. We have one of those. There's the night deck. So shall we make another motion to approve the night deck? Based upon the minor changes to the original plan?
So move the night deck dated December twelfth, right?
Thank you, thank you very much, Bill. I'll second your motion. This is resolution, shall we date it?
For the town of Red Park Annex, phase one of project construction, right?
I think you have an old, this is the same resolution.
That's before.
That we just did, yeah. This was just an older one.
Oh, an older version?
The one that you adopted.
Was good enough.
Incorporates the approval of the EAF in the same language. It's all right.
That seems a little redundant.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that was a prior version. So this is the one that you just did with the, there are three recitals. Approves the form of the EAF, adopts a night deck, and addresses the town for distribution copy. That's the one that you just approved. That one has the night deck attached to it, and the EAF that was prepared with Granny's assistance. So you're authorizing, in that resolution, you authorized in that resolution that the supervisor to sign. And please make sure that you do sign and give it copy to Sue. And then that's the night deck attached to the resolution.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So we'll jump right now to item number four. That's the resolution authorizing the issuance of serial bonds for the Rec Park projects. And so we have one resolution which combines the two amounts. And just again, as a reminder, I think I've sent you information, a couple of emails, just to remind you of the dollar amounts, which were included in both our adopted 2018 budget and our draft 2019. So you can follow this project along year by year and see how it's incorporated into the budget. We are looking at a maximum project cost, and that cost is for both Rec Park West and Red Park East that we've just discussed, of 1.2 million dollars. We have budgeted and approved in our adopted budget $500,000 for Rec Park West, $200,000 for Rec Park East in our budgets. We also have budgeted for 2017, $80,000 for Rec Park land, which we can now put towards this project as well. That's $780,000. And we have a $150,000 application in for CDBG. We have not heard whether we'll be receiving those funds, and we may not here for the next month or so. Although we'll get some indication even sooner than that. So this resolution incorporates what's already been incorporated into our budgets and previously discussed, that's a $700,000 figure. I will tell you, as I think I did earlier, we are going to have more money that we can use that we thought was going to have to be earmarked for the tennis courts because we are coming in under budget in several categories in the A fund. So I think we had good news before. We have even better news for what our year-end numbers are going to come in. We won't be tapping into any of our fund balances in the A fund for any of these projects going forward. So, okay. This is resolution number eighty-eight. It's dated December twelfth, a bond resolution authorizing Rec Park improvements at an estimated maximum cost of 1.2 million, but an aggregate borrowing principal amount of 700,000. And it's to be financed with serial bonds. And I think I've indicated to you that I negotiated a rate far below the rate that was budgeted for these. So I think it's a good time for us to start the process of being able to take advantage of that.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Very good. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Right.
All right, thank you very much. And the last one is the resolution authorizing the issuance of serial bonds municipal campus improvements. And as you remember, this is all part of those clean energy community projects, $100,000 of which is being grant funded. That is for the solar to go on the highway garage. And we'll be talking a little bit about, update about the municipal solar farm project on the highway garage. Insulating this building, which desperately needs it, proper insulation, and replacing our heating ventilation, air conditioning equipment, which is from the 1980s, if you can believe that. So we had initially estimated those projects to be $319,000, all total and total. We may actually, if we do the municipal solar farm project, we may come in under those figures because that will bring the three-phase right to the highway garage. So we can actually lower some of those costs. And so, resolution number eighty-nine, dated December twelfth. What type of resolution here? There we go.
The secret resolution?
I've got a bond resolution.
It's a type-two action under secret.
Right.
Oh, and we're going to do secret first?
Not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
I thought we did secret.
No, not for the campus.
Oh, the campus, right. Eighty-nine, thank you. Type-two action, and Bill moved it. And I think I second it. All in favor?
Right.
Thank you so much. All right, you can tell which one of us didn't get enough sleep last night. This is resolution number ninety, dated December twelfth. It's a bond resolution authorizing municipal campus improvements at an estimated maximum cost of $325,000, 100,000 of which is to be grant funded by our Clean Energy Communities grant that we received. The principal amount not to exceed $225,000. And it references our secret review and ISO move, resolution number ninety. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Right.
I thank you all very much. Okay, not listed on the agenda, but you wanted to be kept up to date on sort of the timelines on the municipal solar farm project, so I wanted to give you that. And sort of more numbers. And again, just so you understand the context, when these, these community solar projects were first authorized by the Public Service Commission, everybody and their grandmother wanted to be a part of developing those projects. And the queue with the utilities became jam-packed with all these projects that were, most of them sort of high in the sky, full. And so the PSC had to go back after the utilities came to them and said, wow, we have all these, you know, what do we do without all these projects in the pipeline? Well, they managed the queue in such a way that there's very few projects right now in front of the utilities of any significant scale. And things are very fluid, including, as you know, what's happening in Washington and what impact that might have. There's a trade case relative to PV panels, you know, being imported from China. And there's been a recommendation by a committee. And so what we are continuing to do, the energy committee members, is to stay with our consultant and follow all this along to see what the latest and greatest numbers might look like. So all of those things are factored into now, which is a tariff on the panels and so on and so forth. So I wanted to give you.
So what's the update, though?
Okay, so the update is just to remind you, on the project, we received our estimated interconnection cost for that project. It came in lower than we had hoped, which was good. If we want to continue to stay in line, which is important because the reimbursement that you get, the support you get from NYSERDA, all depends on when you submit. And so we're in tranche number three, if the technicalities mean anything to you all. But suffice it to say that the subsidization that's happening from the state is decreasing over time. And so in order to stay in the position that we are, we would need to submit a refundable deposit of 25%. I think I mentioned that last meeting, by January fourth. So we'll be talking about this to some great length on December 21st at our meeting.
Where's that money come from?
So that would be a deposit that we would put down.
What would be the amount? We don't know yet?
It's approximately $90,000. And we would have something from the utility, I discussed this with the utility, that they would understand that it's a deposit because they know we have to go through a lengthy process with the board and so on and so forth in the community.
Wasn't the question whether it would be refundable or not?
Yes, so that's something we'll be working with.
They're going to put that in writing?
We're going to ask them to put it in, so.
But when do we go to the public with this?
So that gives us, that would give us the time. We'd have four months then. And so it would give us four months to develop the project, go to the community, talk to them, and certainly go to the people near the well field.
So the language as far in the refundable aspect would be that if this community, for some reason, decides not to go ahead,
Not to go forward.
we could get the $90,000 back?
Exactly, exactly. And as you know, we haven't.
Is that going to be in their writing there?
We haven't spent any money. We haven't spent any money on this initiative, and we're very thankful for the grant that we received to get this far, to know that it is something that we can at least consider. But I did want to sort of update you to some of the numbers because I know it's been a while for the folks at home, and it might require turning this on. That's not, that's, there we go. I have two things. Maybe I'll give you the first one here. No, it's the same one. There we go. Okay. All right, just some numbers. I don't know, Steve, can you, can you?
Can you just a little bit, get rid of the white space? Hit the little, what's that?
Load it up a little bit?
Yeah, there you go.
Is that helpful? I'm sure that's better, isn't it? Right. So again, project size, estimated output, and the output allocation. So you understand, now that we have the grant for the highway garage, there's a little bit less that would be coming from the solar farm that would be related to the town account. But it would still be 16% of the project would go to all of these municipal buildings and cultural institutions. There are 25 accounts. So the Red Public Library wants to join in on this. Obviously, there's a good example of a building that you wouldn't perhaps want to see solar on. Village of Tivoli, another historic building that is able to participate. And we're talking about all taxpayers at this point, you know, because we all participate with the Red Public Library and the Tivoli Libraries and the towns and the villages.
Is there a limit to the number of subscribers?
There's no limit to the number of subscribers. There's no limit to the number of subscribers, Linda, but you can only have a certain percentage of big users. That's why it's called a community distributed generation program. They want it to be available to the community as a whole, to capture those individuals that you referenced, or institutions that are not able to have solar for one reason or another, or maybe they're in a historic district, they would now have this option. And I will tell you, I was very happy, I saw Paula Schoolmaker, and she said the woman organizing Barrytown, who wanted to do a community solar farm, is now back on it all over this. So you might see a lot of Barrytown residents where you might think it's appropriate that they participate in the solar farm instead of having panels all over Barrytown, participate in this project, we would hope. Eighty-four percent of the residents at the town and village would be able to participate remaining electricity that is generated by this project. And it can be structured in many ways, the project, but essentially what would happen is that it would be owned by a finance company developer for five years to take advantage of the investment tax credits, and then an option would exist for us to acquire the system. And I can show you just the dramatic savings that are still projected, even with some of those tariffs added in. So the town, the town, it references the town, but all those institutions would sign a 20-year power purchase agreement with the goal being that we would actually pay less immediately than we're currently paying Central Hudson, at least by, you know, a few percentage points, just to make it attractive from day one. After year five, as I mentioned, the town would, under this structure, have the option to purchase the system at a fair market value.
Wait till Trump finds out.
Yeah, well, he's, he's gonna do his thing, whatever he's gonna do. The municipalities and resident, residents, and here's some of the, some totals, would spend approximately 8.8 million, I think it's actually even higher than that, I'll show you the chart, and we can see what the savings are. Let's go to the chart, that might be an old sheet, okay. So here again, I'll blow it up. Take a look at this. This system would cost about $4 million to construct, approximately, according to, again, updated estimates. This plan includes several assumptions. One is that there would be an escalator of 1.9% for members in years one through five. So they would initially start with a discount, and then they would be increased slightly each year for the first five years, and we can talk about what happens afterwards, because that's a dramatic change afterwards. If we were to want to acquire it after the fifth year, it would cost about, estimated to be half of the initial construction cost. We could acquire it in year six or seven at lesser amounts. That's something that, you know, we would want a range of options for. Here's some statistics that only those of you who are smarter than I would appreciate, which is how many kilowatt hours are produced by a system like this. A system would have some operations and maintenance and fees associated with managing the members. You know, Central Hudson is charged with crediting those who join the farm with the clean energy that's produced by the farm. They handle that, but somebody needs to be, and that would probably be the developer, needs to handle those guys. And, you know, some, some may drop off, or, you know, no one's come on, or whatever, somebody needs to be involved with that. And these are very conservative estimates, high figures associated with those tasks. We want to show you sort of the worst-case scenario, so that whatever happens, comes out better than that. So if you include the acquisition costs and then 20 years of operations and management, you're looking at $3 million and change for a system that can supply. And I think you saw 277 homes plus the municipal buildings and cultural institutions that are interested in joining. Some more statistics there. All right, so if we could look at the chart, and I don't know, maybe I need to blow it up some more, so it's legible for you all. Okay, there are three different scenarios. Okay, there are three different columns here, which is the do-nothing option, and the, if we were to enter into a PPA, a purchase power agreement, and then purchase it, the system at 51%, which is what it's estimated to be. And so you can see what transpires is that if you look over here in the right-hand section here at the bottom, we would be paying, the municipalities would be paying about $180,000 combined, the cultural buildings, for electric. There's the residential rate, and there's the, the total. Okay, and you can see the year-five savings, so the savings are rather minimal in years one through five. But then under this, the way this is structured, all those municipal buildings and cultural institutions can have free electricity going forward once the system is acquired in year six. And so all of these costs are avoided here. Sorry, here's not any column. So that's approximately $40,000 a year, estimated to, at the end of the 25-year period, to be $51,000 a year. And then you look at the residential savings, it's called residence, but we may open it up to businesses as well. That's something we would determine what's appropriate. So the long and short of it is that the do-nothing option, and you see what the cost would be to the municipalities, that's this row down here. And then there's the cost that it would be for, if we were to go ahead with the municipal solar farm. So you're looking at, from the municipality standpoint and the cultural buildings, instead of spending $1,093,000 under this assumption, we would have a cost of $180,000.
Are these documents available to us, or?
This is, yeah, this is, these are, this is the latest draft of sort of the model that was presented a few months ago, you just sort of updated with tariffs.
These documents?
Yeah, well, I think you had sort of that first sheet when Jeff was here making his presentation, you had that first sheet with the numbers. But yeah, this is, this back, I have a copy of this for you, that I can give you the hard copy of it, just so you have these numbers. And again, these are estimates.
I just think that each of the board members should have an opportunity to read a hard copy of what you're referring to.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. So I have other.
At our leisure.
Hard copies that I can send you as well as digital copies. So the difference is a total of, what is it? $10,677,000, that's this figure down here, for both the cultural, municipal, and residential/business electricity costs versus what we have here, which is a total of $3,404,000.
Send it to me, I'll sit down and figure it out.
An acquisition, so it's 5.1 versus 10.6, sorry, these are the two figures to keep in mind for the totals. This 3.4 includes the acquisition and all the maintenance over the 20 years, as you saw on that first page I showed you. This 5.1 is the total figure versus 10.6. So we'll save our taxpayers directly, you see those two figures. But the community as a whole, it will save the difference between 10.6 million and 5.1. So it's a 5.5 roughly million-dollar savings over 25 years.
I thought it was a 3 million by the time you pay your, your operation costs and stuff, right?
No, so the acquisition, Jim?
Acquisition and acquisition.
So you're paying, you're acquiring it for roughly $2 million, or 51% of the construction cost. This 3.4 million includes 20 years of operations and maintenance and membership management. And we think these numbers are overstated, as I said to you initially. But if you add up all of this, it comes to 5.1 total dollars.
Right, so 5.1 is very optimistic, but you're saying at, at minimum, we should save 3.4, is that?
No, 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 that's, that's gonna be the, the total cost of acquiring the system and maintaining the system over a 20-year period, your total expense. And again, this is a conservative number. When I say conservative, it's higher than we think it's going to be, but better to show you numbers that are more conservative. Again, here's a number, in the do-nothing category, we're making very conservative assumptions for our utilities increases. As you know, they've proposed rate increases that are far and above this escalator that we have here, which is 1.9%. So.
This reflects just the kilowatt hours, though, is that, that not true? It has nothing to do with the, since we're all tied to the grid to, you know, sometimes the major portion, but which is the delivery and meter charge that we all pay.
No, there's a, there's a, there's a hookup charge for solar customers, that's a monthly, and that's calculated into that, you would, that's still a part of it.
Right, that's, that's, that's the, for the, for the pleasure of being on the grid, you pay.
Exactly.
You, you pay a fee, if you, if everyone looks at their electric bill.
Exactly.
Depending on how much you use, that can be as much or more than what you're actually paying per kilowatt hour, because all, we're producing the kilowatt hours. We still rely on Central Hudson being our power company to deliver it.
Exactly.
And maintain the grid.
But it includes delivery.
And these figures.
Yes.
Are not just based on the kilowatts we're producing, they're based on the overall electric bill.
Exactly. You'll, you'll still have a little bill from, for the connection. All solar customers, do you do, right, with your home?
Yeah, you know, but at good times, the, the only portion of the bill that you get is.
Is that kind of thing.
Is the 24-month-plus tax, which comes in, you know, what?
Right.
$49 and change every two months.
Right, yes. And so there are several assumptions that are made here, all of the assumptions, we err on the conservative side, including the tariff that could be levied, levied on these panels, that it's above, the assumption is above actually what the committee is recommending to the president to add to these panels. So we'll have more information, I'll give you hard copies of this, and we'll delve into this a little bit more on the 21st, and give you all an opportunity to, you know, have some Q and A session on that. But I, I just wanted to.
Can you just email it? Do you have, do you have it on the link?
Yeah, I can just email that to you. Yeah, I have to scan it and email, but yeah, I've got it, as you can tell, digital. So I can send it to you, and you can take a look at it, yeah. But I did want to just keep you posted on it, as I promised I would.
So on the 21st, you're gonna ask the board to agree to spend $90,000 by January 4th?
To put down a refundable deposit, to hold our place, not, not to authorize the project.
I'm sure we have the paperwork that shows where it's coming from and what kind of conditions under which, you know, we, we might release this.
Okay. All right.
It's only a couple of weeks, right?
It is, only a couple of weeks, yeah. It's a very tight timeline, they want to get those imaginary products, projects out of the queue, so they've given us sort of marching orders that Public Service Commission. All right.
We have a pattern where they want us, they want our money, but they don't want to take the time to.
Well, it's the PSC, you know, this is all new, so they're trying to figure it all out as well.
Try to give us as much notice as possible.
Will do, will do. All right. Public comment?
Yeah?
No public comment at the end of the evening? Linda? It's okay to say no, it's okay to say no. All right. At this moment, I would like to thank you all, and thanks for joining us. Hope you have a wonderful holiday, because you will not see us again until after some of the holidays. I would like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, good evening, thank you all, thank you. All right.